I don't know if I can.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Director Brumstein.
Present.
Director Crowley.
Present.
Director DiCaprio.
Present.
Director Salano.
Here.
Director Jones.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance. Who am I? The United States of America, each and every public for which we stand is one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Would anybody from the public like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda today? Two items on the agenda are the successor MOU and an update on the grand jury report. Any of you would like to speak? We'll move then to our regular agenda, which is to accept the informational report on the MOU and authorize the fire chief to execute the MOU. Chief, are you taking this?
Yeah, I'll start off, Director. So you have the staff report. It's obviously been updated since the last time that we met, which at that point, the decision was made to sunshine the MOU. As it says in the report, this represents, you know, seven months of negotiations between the union, the firefighters' union, and the staff. We have Eddie here, who is one of the lead negotiators, Brenna and Dawn, who are equally here to discuss this or answer any questions, if you have those. But at this point, you know, I'm in support of this MOU, and I hope that the board, through whatever deliberations today, can also accept the report as presented.
What I'd like to do first is go through questions that people have to pose and then have a discussion of the items.
Can I, through the chair, I think we have members of the public who might be here to comment on that, if y'all want to hear them.
Okay, we can hear them now or afterward. Either, how about if we do our question? I'd like to do our questions first, if that's all right. At least we could get clarity, and then I'll come to the board for any comments, to the public for any comments. Okay?
Whatever the question is.
Just any questions that anybody wants to, in terms of clarification or understanding or anything like that? Robert?
Well, one clarification I may. On page 44 of the document.
Which document are you referring to, please?
The one that was in there.
Page four?
Yes, 44, last page of the version. And it's more of a comment clarification. It says that the five-year MOU also should provide some labor relations stability. And I just wanted to, as a question, kind of define what that labor relations stability would bring, as it were.
So I'd be happy to answer that. So Director, I know, you know, your time on the board has been a little shorter than some, but the reality is that in the past, we have had difficult labor negotiations, including, you know, where we've had, quite honestly, a terrible relationship that resulted in two unfair labor practice charges through the state. We've had mediators in here to help us negotiate, which is also not a good sign. And added on top of all of that, and during some of that, we had a national FLSA lawsuit from the International Association of Federated Firefighters. So those are things that can become problematic based upon each side kind of posturing, if you will. The other effect, and I'm sure Eddie won't take any issue with this, but, you know, shorter agreements, in some cases equally, don't necessarily give you the stability that a longer-term agreement would give you. And you tend to pay, obviously, for legal fees to do that. It takes staff time to go to the meetings, it takes staff time, and we pay legal fees to have those meetings in terms of, you know, developing strategies and going back and forth at the table based upon the number of meetings and so forth. So, you know, the reference in there, I think of the way that we meant to put this, was that, you know, this longer-term agreement will give us some of that stability. For the firefighters themselves, having been on the other side many years ago now, it's equally one thing that they don't have to think about, it's one potential conflict or issue that, you know, they're not addressing, so they can focus on their jobs. And I can tell you, as the person who manages the organization, and we have a lot of the people here, you know, deal with all the things that need to happen to make that work. This is a people-driven organization, we're a service industry. When you have a motivated, happy workforce, you know, I think it's easier to get a lot of things done, which, you know, as you know, we do a lot of things. That doesn't mean that if we're in conflict, they quit doing their job, because I would never say that. It just makes it more difficult for sometimes things to get done, because you don't have the volunteer action, or in some cases, the wherewithal, the employees to stay with different things, if in fact they feel that there's a dispute, like we had before, that went on for about seven years. So, you know, that's the inference in there. And, you know, again, it doesn't mean that that's a pressure on you as the board, that's certainly not the way it was meant to be taken, and I hope you don't feel that. You know, I think longer agreements are a risk for the employer, and they're a risk for the employees, because it can go one way or the other. The economy could keep booming, maybe they wish they would have gotten or asked for more, or we could have a problem, and it wouldn't be so great, and then the district would think, well, you know, we're paying a higher cost for an employee that maybe we could have paid less for. So, you know, those are all considerations, but at the end of the day, you know, I think it's worthwhile to have a long-term agreement because of the stability, and also the predictability, which is something that doesn't always get discussed, in terms of you knowing the numbers of what the labor group will cost, so that conclusively, we can do different things and understand what those obligations and continuing costs will be. So there is a benefit to that as well.
Good point. Thank you. Is that the only question? Rob?
Can I respond to this question as well?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Having served on the board through, I think this is probably going to be my fourth, perhaps even my fifth agreement, but most importantly, having served on the board during the period of time when we didn't have an agreement, that cost the board a lot of time and effort during that period of time. It's important to recognize that we deal with a group of employees who by law do not have the right to strike. And in most union situations, the union can say, "Thank you very much, you know, we're going to go on strike." Well, our firefighters are not permitted to do that, and as the chief spoke to, even during that period of time when we didn't have an agreement, they always did a great job. But it was incredibly expensive in terms of the time and the tension that we experienced with not having an agreement. That's part one. Part two is, in my opinion, getting a labor agreement costs X number of dollars, and if you do one for five years, or you do five for five years, it's going to be dramatically more expensive. So I have always been a strong advocate for multi-year agreements, because I think they're more cost-effective and as well as providing stability.
Rob?
First, I want to thank the chief for answering my questions that I had posed to you. And I don't, should I, I know we've all put in questions. Is this the time for us to ask those questions, or should we move until the end?
No, I'd like to just clarify things that might be unclear, so if, let me say.
Well, that's why I did the questions, because there were some things that I felt were.
I'd like to, I'd like to reserve the, how shall I say, the commentary on our questions for later, after the public has spoken, but in terms of asking a question or clarifying something, this would be the time to do that.
You mean clarifying the staff report?
Or clarifying any question where something's not clear. Like you asked the question, how much is the unfunded liability? A question like that is what I'd like to do now, if there's any.
But those are the things he's.
Now.
Yeah.
All right.
If you have any other.
Great, okay, thank you. So the first question that I had was, you know, concerning our current pension system situation with CAL-PRERS and our unfunded liability, my question posed to the staff was, CAL-PRERS, you know, what's our current financial liability to date, to date, okay? And I was provided with a unfunded liability of $39,000.
No, million.
Of $39 million.
Wouldn't it be nice?
Yeah.
We're a pretty good check. $39 million, $312. Well, it's roughly $39 million. And I think the last one I had asked was like $45 or something, $45 million, I think?
It's hard to say.
Or $44? They kind of write. Well, like, if we were mandated to pay it off now, it'd be roughly $39 million, right?
Probably a bit less because of last year's earnings.
Because of that, what we had talked about with the percentage. Okay.
Right.
And I had asked, what are current percent of total salaries compared to our 2018 budget? And that includes all salaries of public safety employees, non-public safety employees. And I was given a figure of 63% of our FY 18, 19 budget. That's with the adopted budget that we just did, right, Kathy? And with the current contract, we're looking at 67%, and that's an additional 4% over what the current contract is without our approving this one. Then we went to, I asked for a little bit of a clarification with the $17 million figure, because when Eddie and his negotiation staff, we had talked, it was 10.3. So I was trying to see what the $17 million was, and I read the staff report and the independent consultant. I just want a little bit of a clarification to show that we're actually, actual expenses, even if we don't even approve this contract, it's 6.7 million dollars that we even, that we'll have to pay anyway, even if we don't approve this, right? Eddie? Or Kathy or somebody? This is what I'm looking at here, what I was given.
Yeah, that's right.
Good? Okay, thank you, Brenna. And I also asked for the current surplus of total funds for this year and the last three years. And from 2016, excuse me, 2015 to 2016 to present, we have $28.6 million in surplus revenue that was given to us. So I was just trying to see financially how we were relative to, you know, just some basic facts and figures, so I could make an informed decision, not only by what the independent auditor gave us, but also through what SANS given us too. So, thank you, Chuck. That's all the questions I.
Virginia?
No, I'm just glad that my colleagues asked these questions, and I thought that Rob's, you know, little one pager was very good, and I think Chuck, some of the responses that you were given were good too, so. And I'm glad that y'all were able to ask that, ask the question. I mean, I know it sounds kind of lame, but y'all asked the questions that I didn't ask. My big thing was the 10.3 versus the $17 million also.
That's kind of a shock, it stands out there, you know?
Well, I think it was the same thing answered in your question. No, I'm done.
Peter?
Yeah, first, I'd like to thank the chair for taking the questions that the board members asked and the staff for responding to those. I think it's helpful for the public in particular to understand some of the background. The questions I asked were primarily process questions, because I want people to understand that we got here by a very deliberative process in which the board was intimately involved. We had a number of meetings with the negotiating team, in which they updated this on the status of negotiations, in which we gave them specific authorizations as to what they could or could not offer to the union. There is nothing, in my opinion, and I think the chief has confirmed this in consultation with the negotiating team, in the MOU, which did not result from direction from the board. So, you know, they did what we asked them to do. Question had been raised, well, wait a minute, they've already ratified it, you know, why are we now? And that's always custom in all the labor negotiations I've been involved with, both here and elsewhere, is that it goes before the union members, and the union members are asked to ratify it after we authorize the approval, and there's a signing of the documents by the two parties, and that's simultaneous. But the role that we play right now is analogous to the union members saying, yes, you know, we agree to this, and we are the members on the other side of the fence. So that was the purpose of my questions, is to try to make sure that people understood the deliberative process by which we got to the point that we are at today. The other comment I would make is people need to understand that this is a negotiated agreement. I'm sure that many of us would like to change.
That's commentary.
Oh, I don't understand what the rules are.
This was just for the question, any more questions you have? You'll have a chance to say, if that's all right.
Okay, well, perhaps you might want to describe, you seem to have a sub agenda here.
I just want, if anybody was unclear about anything in the MOU, just like you asked, I just wanted to take this time.
But give us some, give us a clue as to how you're going to organize this.
We're going to ask any further questions we have, so that we know what we're talking about. Then I'm going to give the public a chance to speak, and then each of you can make commentaries as you're doing right now. So you'll have a chance to make all these comments.
Yeah, but if, but if what Peter's trying to say is in relation to his questions of process, which I did.
I was just trying to find out if anybody had any questions remaining. If all the questions were answered through here, then we don't even need to discuss them here. I just would like to, I just want to be sure that.
That's not what you said to Rob.
I did say that to Rob, I just wanted to ask the questions that people had for right now, if there was anything unclear, just so that when the public speaks, they know what they're talking about. We've got all the information. But I'll call on you, in fact, I'll call on you first, when we come around to the commentary.
Okay.
And I will say, I don't have any further questions here, but I don't agree that the questions were answered correctly, and I won't take issue with them when I have a chance to make a commentary. So with that said, let me ask the public, are there any comments on this from the public? Anybody would like to speak?
Oh, I'll speak, I'm new to this, I haven't.
How about going up there, they record, they record this, and it's on the tape then.
Okay. So I'm just here to, and I don't want to impede all the progress, it sounds like you guys have made, which has been really good, but there was an email that came out yesterday on a listserv that I participate in, that had a number of facts that I just didn't understand, and didn't know whether they were accurate or not, as it informs the decision that the board is making here. And so I forwarded an email to all the directors as a result, but I don't know that you're all familiar with this email, listserv called.
Which one's yours?
Mendo Park Future. My name is Brian Thistle, I sent an email yesterday.
Okay.
And I can maybe, this morning, this message, I got this message yesterday, and so I was a little surprised at some of the data, and it may not be accurate, which is why I wanted to come here to see if it was accurate, and what is informing the decision that the board is making. So the information that I got in this email from Mendo Park Future indicated that currently the Mendo Park Fire Department's average salary is $166,000 a year, which is the highest average in any California state or local agency, and that this new contract, this five-year contract, is going to increase the costs by $17 million over the next five years, and an increase of approximately $58,000 per firefighter. So I'm just asking a question of the board here, as a citizen and a taxpayer, and trying to understand where our tax dollars are going, if we truly believe that compensation plan that's already the highest in the state needs to increase by, you know, $17 million over the next five years, and I just heard now that we have a large unfunded liability, that I wasn't aware of it. It wasn't in the summary, but I'm just trying to understand why Mendo Park sees it necessary to raise compensation. And I, like everyone else, appreciate the value of what it is that the fire department does for the community, but we have, you know, a lot of financial needs for the community, and I'm just trying to understand, are those facts correct, and if so, how is it we got to the point where we felt like we needed to make this large adjustment in salaries for an organization that's already the highest paid in the state? That was my question for the board.
Let me just clarify, as a matter of process, we can't engage with public input. So we hear it, and sometimes we can direct you somewhere, but other than that, we can't engage.
That was my concern as a citizen taxpayer.
Thank you for your input. Any other, anybody else? Okay, I'll return then back to the board here, and Peter, I cut you off.
No, it's okay, I understand the rules.
Please continue.
I'm glad you asked this question, because I will address it in my commentary. The first part of my commentary is to make sure that we all understand that this agreement and this process is the result of a negotiation between two parties. Whenever you have a negotiation between two parties, nobody gets everything they want. And we have been at this, chief along with, seven months? Seven months. And I mentioned, in response to my question, the board has met six special sessions to provide guidance and to review the progress of the negotiating team. The negotiating team has probably met 50 times with the union. And in the process of that negotiation, we put things on the table that we wanted, they put things on the table that they wanted, we ended up with things upon which both parties agreed. It was a good-faith negotiation. I'm sure that people find particular aspects of this agreement that they find troubling, but I can say with great confidence, given the 15-plus years that I've served on the board, I think it's a good agreement. Now, to specifically address the question that you raised about the highest average in the state, that figure didn't come from the fire district, it comes from a state report, which in my opinion is very misleading. There are literally thousands of firefighters in California who've paid more than the highest paid Mendo Park firefighter. The problem with dealing with averages particularly, you don't understand them, is that if you have more first responders and fewer clerks, your average goes up. If you want to have a lower average, you hire more low-paid people, but that doesn't provide better service. So focusing on that particular report, while it can excite your leaders, is not particularly helpful, and I can point you to Transparency California, which lists the salaries of every single public servant in the state of California. And you go down that list, you just type in firefighter, and you go through pages and pages and pages and pages of firefighters who are paid more than the highest paid firefighter in Mendo Park. Do the same thing if you put in fire chief. So that figure, I think, is very misleading, and I regret that it's been the one that's tossed out there to describe this, because I don't think that's fair or accurate. And I'd be pleased to spend time with you after the meeting, showing you the other data that I think is much more pertinent and meaningful, which by the way, people are aware of, but just chose not to, you know, didn't fit their particular narrative.
So, but are the facts true, that the current average is?
I'm sorry, outside the public, if you can't do that. There will be a chance at the end of the meeting where you could speak at some time.
Sure. Okay. That's it.
Okay. We may go around several times here, I'm going to come back to you, Virginia.
Oh, no, I just, I'm just want to hear what everyone else has to say right now, honestly. I want to actually talk about the answers to these questions when it's the right time. I mean, you had a lot of questions, Chuck, and I guess I'm going to go back to the status quo costs, which are in your questions and Rob's questions. And I don't know if this is the right time, Chuck, but you said that the status quo costs, the discussion is erroneous and misleading, if you want to come back and talk, I want to hear that.
I'll address that when it's my turn.
Okay. And that's what I'm waiting for.
Rob?
Other than, I'd like to comment on some of what our speaker said, but I think Peter handled it pretty well. Look at California Transparency and just see these average salaries from these different firefighters. We actually have a unique situation here, because we're a federally funded task force too, so not only does it enhance the fire district by our firefighters and task force three, they not only respond to emergencies here, or search and rescue situations here in California, but all over the country. And they get that tremendous amount of training, so in case, if we need their expertise here locally that we have, and also being a member of the FEMA task force, we also have that enormous inventory of equipment that are used for these disasters. And like anything else, if they're part of a task force, they're going to have that availability in order for them to work additional amounts of overtime, not only working the FEMA task force, but also backfilling for positions in these particular fire stations, which are, were also backfilled or funded by FEMA, not only for the replacement of our own firefighters in our particular stations, but also for being dispatched to different parts of the country. So this is a desirable fire department to be on, probably, it is the best fire department to be. Not only between the training and experience, but just the aspect that we are a very well-funded organization, we're not in debt. In fact, the reason why I asked for the CAL-PRERS, the unfunded liability, is that if it comes to task tomorrow, we have that in our reserves to pay it off. And if you research any of these other state and federal, excuse me, state and local agencies, you'll see that they don't, they don't have the funding in order to pay off their CAL-PRERS. And I'm talking today, now I mean, now I don't know three, five years from now, but when I asked the question was, I wanted to know today, and we have the reserves. In fact, we have $2.6 million just in surplus funds from 2015. So, I mean, we're a pretty solvent fire agency, and I think a lot of that has to do with consolidation of fire services or public safety, that's another issue that we can talk on. So that's why I ask those types of questions.
Can I just add on to Rob's?
Go ahead.
For mainly, I mean, I can't speak to you directly, but the unfunded liabilities that we are dealing with today have been, at least during the tenure, the time I've been on the board, which is about seven, six to seven years, has been paid down every year, at least once or twice. And I think that practice has happened even before I got on the board, so I would say probably 10 years of paying down the pension liability, which is huge. There are, I'm not saying that any, I'm not saying that pension liabilities are a great thing, but if you compare our liabilities and other liabilities, I'm thinking of a neighboring city, ours are significantly lower. And that's, you know, in due part because the previous boards have been very diligent and disciplined about paying these liabilities down. And I don't think, unless the board comes in and says, oh, we're going to stop doing that, I certainly hope in the foreseeable future that that doesn't happen. So just, you know, to let you know, I think the neighboring city that I'm referring to is in danger of, I think, losing fire service, I don't know, you might know more here, losing fire service, but they're, and they're going to go up for a sales tax, another increase on top of the county increases to be able to pay down, I don't even know if they can pay it down, the liabilities. So, I mean, if you look at the financial health of the district, yeah, we're blessed. that, you know, our property taxes have gone up, but at the same time, I think that you got to have a board that is disciplined in how they deal with the liability. And I think that's what we were trying to do. And I think that the previous board, and Peter's been on that board before, has done a good job of that, which is like $39 million versus $300 million. There's a huge difference. We don't have a $300 million pension liability.
Rob, you'd finished all your questions, right? Or not questions, comments?
I was getting back to you. Sorry.
We've been very fortunate that we've been able to pay off.
Robert, your comments?
Well, my comment is kind of figured out. Peter's somewhat, I think in our approach, remain competitive of our district. Sometimes money is, is important to be competitive, but there are also the quality of people, I think, that are recruited because of that competitiveness and because of people seeing opportunity. Because, you know, in the Bay Area here, we, the price of living is very high, I don't know, the area, we're not way out of area in order to, and they can probably get jobs in those areas, but once to a person decides to live here in the Bay Area, it's important for them to build a sense of, you know, not to worry economically, whether they have enough gas when they get home, or whether, you know, the kids are able to be comfortable with things they didn't like seeing them go into, or even just that housing in general. And that cost here in Bay Area, and I think the cost, from what I've seen, just being in a very short period of time, the guys in the trucks are very, and the ladies are very excited about working here, and they are competitive. And sometimes, some of that you can buy and some of it you just can't. And I think that's what I've seen this district has, has had, and I think what everybody, maybe speaking in general terms, wants to strive towards. And I think we are headed a proud in that. And I think being able to provide extra money for folks to live and work in addition, I think, to me, I think it's worth it. Especially when we've got a five-year commitment that we, we can lock in now, because it may like someone say, go up or down, but yet still we know what, we know what we got. And that certainty is always important.
I, I have two kinds of comments that I want to make. And I'm going to do the first one and then see if anybody else has any, and then do the second one. First one relates to the process. And I had some things I want to give out about the process. If you guys need time. Thank you. I'm very concerned about this idea of the so-called status quo cost. And as Virginia pointed out, I did say this was both erroneous and misleading, and I'd like to document why. And what I've prepared here is a chronology of the financials that we considered. Back in January.
Mr. Board President, I apologize for interrupting. My only, I'm playing the role also of district council representing my office, obviously, which is the reason for my interruption. I just want to be careful that anything that you're handing out or saying doesn't reveal any communications in closed sessions. Those communications are, can't be disclosed under the Brown Act.
Well, in fact, I think we already breached, of course, they can be under the Brown Act. I mean, they don't have to be revealed, but they may be revealed.
No, they're prohibited.
I, I don't believe that's the case. I mean, you can have open negotiations. You can have open negotiations, but the fact, let me finish here. I'm addressing the objection here. The chief, I mean, not the chief, but the responses here have already said, they quoted numbers and said this was in keeping with closed session. Now, we can't, a statement's been made that what we've done is in keeping with what was done in closed session. But how can we make that statement publicly and not deal with the facts, when in fact, I believe the facts are counter to what was disclosed in closed session?
Well, I guess my, the legal parameter within which I would recommend that you work is, it's one thing when the board decided to make the MRG memo, for example, public, that's a public document. The board as a whole can make decisions about waiving privileges broadly, but with respect to a particular direction or things said along the way in particular meetings, my opinion is that's protected from disclosure by law and shouldn't be, shouldn't be shared publicly.
Again, this was, Peter asked the question, is there anything in the proposed MOU that is inconsistent with the board's direction to staff negotiation authority that was provided? And that was all provided in closed session. So if I want to take issue with this, how can I not deal with the facts when the conclusion has been made that yes, it did, it did coincide with board direction? And I'm suggesting, no, it did not. And I'm trying to show the facts to say that this statement, this, this has already breached the, the confidentiality of the closed session.
You mean, I'm sorry, you mean Peter's first question? Because I don't agree.
Peter's question, the answer to it, it says, it says right here, the board directed staff to negotiate a successor agreement. That was done in closed session, so it's.
No, but we reported that out.
No, we did not. We did not.
Yes, we did. Yeah, we absolutely reported it out.
Virginia's correct.
Well, we did report it. At the end of each of those meetings, the detailed guidance that we gave the negotiating team, because that would have been inappropriate.
And I, I don't disclose any of the, the guidance to the negotiating team. I'm simply quoting the numbers here.
The, the concern in just looking at the handout is there's an indication on different dates that were closed sessions, whether called staff report or closed session handouts. I think they were primarily closed session discussions or handouts, and described particular dollar amounts, whether it's 5.4, 9.36 as a 9.7 reference.
Right.
That's.
Yeah, these were part of negotiations.
So, but I think more importantly is that it doesn't give, because I think you were trying to be sensitive Chuck, it doesn't give the full context of what was actually presented to the board in closed session. Does that make sense? It's just, these are parts of.
Well, I'm just dealing with the numbers here. I, I guess I'm going to ask for your opinion now of this. Are you saying that I did not mention, even though it's talked about that the amounts of money and so forth, the costing and all that, even though it's saying we did it according to board authorization, that even though I want to show that it doesn't, I can't show that? We have to accept a, a statement that it does?
I, I think you, you are free to say that you either disagree or you think that the negotiating team did things along the way that, if you wish, were contrary to the board's or individual board members' preferences or direction, if you think the conditional MOU is contrary, or is inappropriate, or is somehow problematic. But I think that's different than saying, on this date, as one element of the closed session, the board said this dollar amount, whether or not, I'm not saying these numbers are correct or not correct, or complete or incomplete.
So can I give clarification? So should this document be circulated?
I do not think that it should be, because it reveals closed session communication.
I don't want to see it then. You need to collect it from me. Could someone collect it from me? Because if, if legal counsel's saying we aren't supposed to see it, I don't want to see it. This may be subject to a perb or something, and I don't want to be part of it. Thank you.
And I would ask if the citizens are willing to give it back. I would ask if citizens are willing to give it back.
I have a question for our counsel.
Sure.
Eddie?
Yes, excuse me.
By us seeing this, does it taint anything, or are we in violation or anything by, by looking at this document?
No, the board members were present, and I'm not concerned with the board members having seen statements of one of the board members.
Well, can I say one thing, Eddie? Chuck, if you have any more documents, can you run it by Eddie first, so that we don't have that, that issue again?
Well, I just saw the answers today, so I mean, this was the first time, I, I was, I saw them last night, excuse me, late afternoon. So this was the first time that I had seen the district respond and say, oh yes, this was in keeping. And I then just tallied something to basically say, no, it wasn't in keeping.
Maybe we can take a 10-minute break, Chuck, and you can show Eddie the documents that you have, so we can review them and so our, our counsel can look at them, so we don't have that situation again?
But I'll defer to the board president. You may or may not have other documents.
I don't have any other documents.
There you go.
Okay, great.
I have no other document.
Chuck, I think it's important to understand that in the process of negotiation on the part of both parties, there is a progression from where you start and where you end. And the closed sessions that we have are ones that were designed to move that process along. I think counsel has properly informed us that unless we reported out from a particular closed session what our guidance was at that close, to the negotiating team, that that matter is not, we are not now legally permitted to tell them of our incremental guidance. In my opinion, the only guidance which is important was that which we gave them when we accepted the, the final recommendation. And so how we got there is interesting, but I don't think is, is pertinent. The union started from a very different position than where they ended up. And the two sides came together.
Well, with that, with the document drawn, I'd like to make my point nonetheless without doing that. In all of the guidance that we provided the negotiating team, we always talked about total cost. The words, I don't know what are the words that we're talking about here, these words of, yeah, status quo cost never appeared. It never appeared in any other analysis of any other contract since I've been on boards in 2013. The statement that's made here, that was made that these are costs that we must pay is simply untrue. We don't have to pay those costs. And in fact, when the contract, when we reached an impasse at a prior contract, we stopped step increases. We simply stopped them. It, it just isn't factually true that these are required.
Or you took action.
Step increases were suspended. And I don't even think, step increases, I don't even think it's a good structure, but that's beside the point. These automatic increases of 5% I think are a bad idea. But in any case, it was never mentioned.
Chuck, you're factually incorrect. Can I read to you from the VRT report, MRT report? It says right here, these costs are analyzed in the context of existing district costs, which will continue even without a new agreement. What is unambiguous about that?
When, when we did not have a new agreement before, we imposed an agreement. And that, it doesn't matter, the imposed agreement did not mandate step increases.
And we ended up with perb charges and all sorts of other things?
But not because of the step increases.
Yeah, the net change or the costs resulting from the new is estimated to be net change. And that's exact language that talks about what you're speaking to and to suggest that that was never discussed. It's just factually incorrect.
I want to finish my comments. I mean, you can speak.
Thank you. On the MRT report?
I think it's on the first page.
It's attachment D. It's relatively far back in the package.
But that is the first time, that is the first time that this concept of costs that are different. In fact, all the other, when we gave guidance, we always gave it on total cost. It was very clear, I, it was very clear that we're dealing with total cost, total compensation. Those words, total cost and total compensation are repeated numerous times. In previous analyses by MRT, they never referred back to status quo costs. Except, as I recall, in one situation, the status quo cost could refer to pension payments that are going up regardless of what the board does, and they go up based on our contractual agreement over CalPERS, and we do in fact have no control over that. But in terms of this, we gave certain guidance, that guidance was increased, and we were then told at the very last meeting we had, just before I went to the consultants to cost it, that we, they were within the guidance. We expected, it mentioned that we would get results back in about two weeks. Well, in fact, two months passed, and two months later, we get this, we're a whole new construct of two kinds of costs, and the guidance we gave didn't include one kind of cost, it only included the other kind of cost. And it, literally, the amount of this contract was almost doubled from what we had authorized. And then there's this elaborate explanation, which is simply untrue, of something like status quo cost. That concept has never been given, it's never been in any MRT report before. I believe it's an after-the-fact justification for the fact that the negotiations got a little bit out of control. What we offered was not costed properly, and it makes sense that it wasn't, because it wasn't costed by people who are financial people, and with, that we've then have since come back and tried to create this explanation of status quo cost, which simply is not true. They are not status quo, they do not necessarily continue. They might continue, but they might not. In fact, many of the changes that are in the proposed MOU are changes to the step system. We've added steps, higher steps and lower steps, we've changed the values of the steps, we've changed the spacing of the steps. The steps are part of the negotiated thing, they are not automatic. And to suggest in here that they were automatic and therefore we can take them off the table is silly. We've never done that before. We've never done that before. The fact is, this agreement costs us $17 million more. I believe that the MRT costing is accurate, as best as I can tell, with that. It is 17 million more, not 10 million. Now, if the board votes on it, then the board effectively has, has said 17 million. That's, I mean, you okayed that, but I will contend that this was not what was said all along, that the answer that this is consistent with the negotiation, not with the negotiation, that this is consistent with our direction is not the case. And it's one of the things that troubles me a great deal about, one, the ability to do financial analysis in this organization, and two, the integrity of the presentation made to us. This troubles me a great deal, because I feel, I feel insulted that somebody would think, oh, maybe I didn't notice, or maybe, maybe I would go along with something that's just total fabrication. So that's my statement. I, I have other statements about things that I'm going to stop now and give the board a chance. Peterson, do you want to say something? And I stopped you at this point. I will go to you.
Well, I just prefer, refer you to the MRT report, and at your, the board's, your insistence and board's concurrence, you said you weren't comfortable with the staff costing this out, and you wanted an outside entity to do that. We selected an outside entity to do that. They did it. I think that there's a fundamental issue here that we, we need to understand, that when you go into negotiations, you don't ever, Eddie, correct me if I'm wrong, you don't ever say, okay, this is a blank slate, everything's off the table, and, and we're going to have, everything has to be put in here, we build up from, from zero. We came out of the impasse, and we were forced at that point to, to make some decisions. Those decisions were unilateral. They were not decisions which were agreed to by the union. And they led to a great deal of ill will and some legal action in which we in fact were the guilty party for having overreached in terms of what we did coming out of that agreement, coming out of that impasse. I'm, I'm trying to think of an example, but you, you don't start the process of negotiation by saying, okay, assume everybody's got no salary and no rules and no benefits. You, you start with the negotiation saying, this is the status quo, and what do we want to change about the status quo? Eddie, have you?
Yeah, and some of it is, I think. Yeah, and some of it is, I think, substantive perspective on the package, but on the narrow point, on the points that you're focused on. Under the Miles-Mills Brown Act, the law governing labor negotiations here in California, conditions of employment, pay, benefits, and so on, continue in effect beyond the expiration date of the contract until either you have a new MOU, or the board, following appropriate negotiations, impasse, if fact finding applies and so on, imposes new terms and conditions. So you start from a place, those are the conditions of employment, and the board can direct its negotiators to make any proposals it wants on any subject. And so the MRG report, I think it's just how you read it. It identifies if there was no new contract, no new MOU, and just that MOU and those conditions continued in effect for the next five years, there would be 6.7 million in additional compensation costs. That's all it's saying. If you looked at the deal points, that was characterized by MRG as 10.3 million. So if you add those two numbers, it's 17 million. I'll leave it to the board members to talk about what's an appropriate amount and overall cost, what could have been proposed or not proposed on the costs that would have continued under the current MOU, but I think that's the gist of it.
Robert, do you have more comments?
So, just one. Is it my assumption, which say, that without any negotiation at all, there would be 6 million, roughly somewhere, increase on an annual basis?
MRG concluded over the next five years, if the terms and conditions in the current MOU simply continued, that would be 6.7 million in costs, because under the current conditions, pension rates would go up, health costs would go up, and other factors.
Rob, did you have any more comments?
I'm just kind of disappointed that we had, it was, you had an issue with the staff doing the negotiations, and then you have an issue now with MRG saying that they're not providing the proper information to us. We have our counsel over here saying that even without the contract, it's 6.7 million, which is part, which were part of my questions. You know, it's either you trust the staff or you don't. I mean, and we even went so far as to have independent consultants come in here and give us some figures, and we're there too. So, I'm, I'm just for lost for words for that. I mean, we got an independent owner coming in here doing this for us, MRG, and then we have staff concurring with what MRG, and MRG's concurring with staff. It's either you have, you know, confidence in the staff job or you don't, okay? And I have, I'm not a professional firefighter, but I do have confidence in Harold and his senior staff here. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, and tell me, Eddie, I'm on the verge of violating the Brown Act, because I certainly don't want to do that. But this $17 million total number is out there now. The bargaining unit had a starting place, and I, and I don't want to, so is that, was their starting place, did that starting place include the 6.7 million of the costs that are our current obligations regardless of whether this MOU was signed?
Yeah, and without getting into the particulars of...
And if you can't, if I'm out of bounds, let me know.
I think it can be answered. And it's not so much, you know, exactly a closed session question, it's just what went on in negotiations. And without getting to the particulars, as you might expect, not surprisingly, the firefighters' proposals were for increases in a variety of categories. They didn't propose decreases, they didn't propose do away with all steps, or we should, as firefighters, pay more to pension, or we should pay more to health. Those were not their proposals. So their proposals took what existed, and they asked for increases. There obviously were a lot of different subjects discussed, a lot of different proposals on both sides, but the short answer is, yeah, they started with what was in the MOU, they asked for exponentially more as a starting point, and went from there.
But was their starting point, did that starting point include the 6.7 million?
Yes, they didn't use that number or present in that manner. They said, we recognize costs are going to go up in pension and health and other things, notwithstanding that reality, here are our proposals for enhancements.
Can I?
Go ahead.
So, the difference between, and I don't know what makes up that difference, but from looking at the report, there is an escalation without doing anything about 2.10% per year, what the report said, it was escalates that one. And then, and then we, there was a, the overall cost, if I'm correct, is about, we're proposing here, is about 5.35%, somewhere in that neighborhood. And so, between the diff, between the two, there's almost 3% variation. And that variation is all of that, which was, has been negotiated, turned to cost, which we arrive at where we're at at this point in time. So, without getting into any of the details of it, but I assume the dollar amount on what is the, it's just the 6 million, or I don't know what that would add up to five years, we get nothing at the lower end of where we are today. There is that dollar, and I'm trying to figure out what that might look like, or what dollar might, might add up to.
And that's the number in the staff report, in the MRG report, which is 10.3. So the combination of, if there were no changes in the MOU, it just continued for five years, that would cost 6.7 million. The deal points, maybe that's a way to, a phrase, the net of the deal points, both things that cost more and cost less, the net cost over five years of the deal points to change things in the MOU is $10.3 million, which is about 3% per year on the deal points. And then you could sum the two for the overall change in costs over the next five years.
Peter, I wanted to take my turn first, but did you want to respond to that directly?
Well, why don't...
Trying to respond to the question that you raised.
And try to do it conceptually, because I don't want to get trapped into particular numbers. We begin negotiations, and we have an existing package for healthcare. Both sides have the opportunity to say, we want to change that, we want to increase it, or we want to decrease it. And same thing with steps. We started the negotiation with steps, and both sides had the opportunity to say, we want to increase or decrease steps. We never said that we wanted to eliminate steps, we wanted to eliminate healthcare, and putting them back in again was going to be part of the negotiation. We started with the status quo. We had a certain number, and we could have said to the negotiating team, we want to get rid of healthcare, we want to get rid of steps. And I can imagine what direction the negotiation would have gone. It is very difficult, in my experience, when you're negotiating a new agreement, to take a current benefit or a current salary structure and say, we're going to take that off the table, we're going down to zero on this thing, and we're starting from scratch. And that's why I'm a bit perplexed about these questions being raised at this point, because we had the option of taking healthcare off the table. We had, or telling the negotiating team to take healthcare off the table. We had the option of telling the negotiating team, we want to get rid of steps. We chose not to do that.
Can I just add on to that really quickly? Because the public is not privy to what goes on behind closed session, behind the enclosed session. But I want to let the public know that it was not as if we were all in agreement necessarily. I don't want to step over, or step beyond the boundaries, but there was a lot of discussion. So this is not just one of these decisions that was made, you know, oh, it was five minutes, this is over many, many meetings. So, I don't want the public to think that this was a, like an easy, you know, decision that was made. It was not a, like a event kind of decision. But I understand the concern, so thank you for being here.
I want to make my last point on this one, and then I want to talk about the whole contract. When we discussed different levels, I would always assume we were discussing this from a budget standpoint. How much are our costs going to go up under the new contract? And that's how every discussion I've ever had about changes is. Given where we are now, how much is it going to go up? And it's never been in a discussion where we'll say, well, it'll go up, it'll go up 17 million, but we're only going to count 10 million of it, the other 7 million of it, we're not counting. I just never been in a discussion like that. You talk about the whole thing. If somebody had said, the costs are going to go up 2% no matter what, how much more do we want to do? I would have probably been down in the 1% level, let's talk about 3%. It's consistent with inflation and so forth. But that was never stated. These terms, this, this, this status quo and stuff, it had never come up in our discussion. It was never explained to us. It was nothing was ever, no analysis was ever done like that before. And I think it was invented for the first time in this MRG report. And I don't know, in response to Rob's statement, that I was unhappy with MRG. I don't know who caused MRG to look at it this way. I don't, I can't say. But I can say that I have never seen an analysis split like that. None of ours have ever been split like that. So, in any case, I would not have, I would not have authorized, I would not have done that. But the fact is, the board has the chance. Right now, you're voting on a $17 million increase, and if that's what you want to do, that's, that's your prerogative. I'm going to, I'm going to make a statement that, in a minute, about the whole contract, and then, and then I will go. I'm, I am opposed to this contract for a number of reasons. I think that the average increases are way beyond the norm of our community. I don't think people are getting raises anywhere close to this in general. I think it does, in a sense, add insult to injury to take people who are very highly compensated, well above the median income level in, in this area, and be looking at what I consider excessive raises. So that's one thing. The second thing is, I think the total dollar amount is too much. We're already looking at shortfalls in our capital improvement program, the ability to build new stations and so forth. And I think that this money would be better spent within the district for either capital things or for doing things like funding the alerting system countywide that would give us better alerting than they had up in the North Bay when the fires occurred and so forth. One of the things I think we should be working on. I think we could be spending it much better in terms of building our volunteer organization to deal with disaster preparedness. I think it also memorializes some things I'm troubled by. I, I, I'm troubled by this idea of taking a staff captain, and apparently that, that agreement is a side letter to the union. And a side letter is something that has a life, maybe it was coterminous with the agreement, maybe it was just for one year, I don't know how long or what it was for, but it was a temporary thing, clearly wasn't part of the main agreement. And we're now inserting this language, which gives a captain who spends 40 hours a week, we pay that captain as if he or she were working 56 hours, which troubles me, and we pay a 10% premium on top of that. And temporarily, we're even giving free housing. And to me, there's a point where you say, come on, now, the housing isn't in the agreement, so I shouldn't, I should take that, I take that comment back. But I think that we shouldn't be doing that. That just isn't something that is good practice. I think it rubs people the wrong way, it rubs me the wrong way. And I think there's a number of other small things in here, but I'm not going to say anything more. I, I, I'm basically troubled by the fact that we're, we're making people angry at us. We, I noticed there's a number of letters from people. There was one at our meeting last, a couple of weeks ago, and there's just a whole stack of letters, I don't know, 15 letters or so, from people here. And it makes, it makes me angry. I happen to be of the age where a lot of people are in retirement, and they're, they're looking at, you know, 2% increases in their retirement income, and 3% or 4% increases in their medical payments for, under their retirement, such that when they get their retirement, they have a 0% or less than, they get actually a decline in their payments. These are people in our community, and I just don't think this is a reasonable thing to do. So, I will then start again with comments of it. Robert, do you have? You done? Rob?
I have a question.
I have a question, check, so this memo was dated July 24th, 2018, and each of us had an opportunity to meet individually with MRG and the chief. So, what she, I mean, what happened to make you now, and I'm not saying it's, your thinking is wrong, I just, we've had this for over a month now. And so, this is not new information, the captain situation is not new information. I think that was approved, if I remember correctly, held for one of our regular meetings, right?
Yes.
Wasn't that approved?
The trading captain?
Yeah.
That's approved at T E, through board action, that's the purpose of it.
Yeah, so this is nothing new. Is that what you were talking, what do you think?
Well, let me be clear about the MRG. I did go to the meeting with the consultants, and I went through extensively the worksheets and so forth. And I objected at the time, and I objected in the meeting that you were present to the use of status quo.
The whole board, not just me, the whole board.
Yeah, so, you're right. It's not a new complaint, but as new as we come here. The last time we had a contract negotiation, I had stated my personal position on that contract, and Peter took issue with that and said that I shouldn't state how I was going to vote on something until I'd heard from the public. So part of what I've been doing is listening to what the public wants to say. The trading captain, I did not know that that was part of the MOU. It has never been part of the MOU before. That is new, and until we got the MOU...
But if we approved that, it has to go as part of the contract.
No, it doesn't. It could come as a separate item, as a side letter again. I mean, it could have come in any number of forms. We've now memorialized it in the MOU for five years.
But we knew that going in.
I did not know that.
Unless I missed something, I may...
No, the, the side letter was only for, I don't know what the, what was the term of the side letter?
The captain at that time is for two years.
So it was a two-year agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, and now it's part of the MOU, but that, that's a change.
And the, and the chief can't do side letters with the labor group that was decided years ago. Only the board could do that.
It's, it's a permanent FTE on a two-year cycle. I mean, in two years, we'll interview the people who are interested in the position, the positions there, through board action.
Right.
But the compensation arrangement was part of the side letter, the compensation was not part of it.
Working on the last negotiations, the board direction at the time, and there was no direction given this time, so I guess the carryover was no side letters. That was the previous contract that we negotiated, that was very, I think part of one is no side letter. So moving in this, this affirmative position, it has to pay associated with it, so it was brought into that, it was part of any of the salary position, instead of the side letter that we created.
So you had any more comments?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, I think it's real important, particularly as we have members of the public here, to distinguish between your personal perceptions and the board. And you constantly say, we weren't told this, we weren't told that. There was no doubt in my mind, when we began this agreement, that we had health benefits in place, that we had steps in place, that the purpose of the agreement was to negotiate changes from what we had in place. And I would just caution you not to speak for the rest of us. I think that the staff has done a superb job in negotiating this agreement. Would I like some things to be different? Of course. Of course. Would the union like some things to be different? Of course. One could go and look at things like total compensation and say, that's where we want to start. But we chose not to do that. We chose to say, we want to focus in on what's being changed. Now, you make that sound like somehow along the way, the rules were changed. Not in my mind. No, you may see it that way, but I never understood that to be. I understood that what we were doing in these negotiations was saying, given where we are now, what do we want to increase? What do we want to decrease? So I was not at all surprised by the MRG analysis. I think it bent over backwards to say, here are the costs of the agreement. Oh, by the way, these are the ongoing costs that you would have incurred anyway. Wasn't a surprise to me. And I think to characterize this as being a $17 million agreement is disingenuous. You know, if you want to talk about total cost, what you should talk about is that every single penny that we pay out from ground zero up, we don't do that. We say, this is where we were in terms of salary and benefits, and these are the changes that we have negotiated with our union. And the question we've always asked is, what's the incremental cost of this agreement? And I think the staff has been very consistent in responding to our concern. That was the way that we authorized them to negotiate. We never said to them, we want you to negotiate with the status quo costs included in the negotiation. I assumed, I won't speak for others, that we were starting where we started, not from ground zero.
I'd like to respond to that. Unfortunately, this is where our attorney has crippled me in terms of being able to respond factually here, because in everything we were given, it always referred to cumulative, cumulative total compensation, cumulative total compensation, never incremental, cumulative total.
Chuck, this is nowhere near the cumulative total compensation of firefighters.
The 17 million is the cumulative total change?
No, no, but now you're using the word change. If you want to talk about total compensation, you're going back to the figure that Rob asked about, you know, what percentage of our budget is used for compensation?
We can play show game all day long. I'm just saying to you, we weren't talking about what, we weren't never talking about just the incremental cost of something. It was cumulative cost.
Again, don't use the "we" pronoun when you talk about the-
Well, I think an examination of documents would show that "we" is factually correct. And you can make a statement to the contrary, as you have, but I'm saying to you, I'm not able to show evidence here that what I'm saying is correct. And somehow, in terms of public debate, to not be able to show factually what actually occurred, and to be able to say, oh, we just talked about part of it, or we never talked about the whole thing, it just prickles the conversation. So I'm going to just, I want to finish. The other thing I just wanted to comment upon is, I never raised any issue here about the medical expenses. So you use that, but that's not anything that I've talked about.
No, I give that as an example. You know, we did not say to the staff, start off with zero for healthcare. We said, start where you are, and these are the things we'd like to see you increase. These are the things we'd like to have you decrease.
I think we've, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah. So then, these questions that I had answered by the staff, like, what is our current percent of total salaries compared to our 2018 budget? And they gave me a percent of 63%. That's inaccurate?
No, I didn't take issue with that. I haven't checked that. I don't know. I thought you said it was 67%, by the way.
Well, if it's 67% with this end of contract, if we approve it, are they inaccurate?
I could not tell you.
Okay. And as to my question four, when with the five-year contract, the total cost of the state was $10.3 million, the 17 million, as what Ed described here, we're looking at a 6.7 million additional cost that would have been incurred by the fire district. Do you agree with that? Now, what do you think the figure is?
I think it's a $17 million increase. I think the 10 million is just to make it look like the negotiators adhere to our limit. But the fact is, it's 17 million. That's the fact.
Are you kidding me? Oh, it's way over five years ago.
Yeah, I'm talking about 6.7 million that we would have had to pay anyway, even without the contract. So you're saying that's-
That's the difference of opinion. Chuck feels we have no obligation to pay that, and that was all negotiable. And I just disagree.
But is it false? Is this a false statement?
Yes.
It is.
So where do you think the starting point is, Chuck? If it's not, the starting point may be the wrong word. So if you don't think that the $6.7 million is an ongoing obligation, what do you think the ongoing obligation is?
We only had an obligation through the contract and through whatever we might have imposed or done, or who knows what. I don't know what might have happened. I know the total is 17 million, and I agreed with that. But I believe that the 10 million is in there to make us feel that the negotiating team did its job. And I don't think it did its job. I think the negotiating team lost control of this. It ballooned up to 17 million, and there was, they say, well, how are we going to make it look like we did what the board said? And that's the result of this.
Point of order. I mean-
Mr. President, you have a comment to make, but it's not a point of order.
It is a point of order. You know, if you go back to the rules under which we operate, you know, we are not allowed to engage in the kind of derogatory comments that you keep making about the process. You can have your opinion, but don't sit there and say, we think this and we think that. That's something just not correct.
I think we've had a full and complete discussion of this. Would somebody like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to-
I wanted to say one thing. Peter did a great job of talking about the history of the impasse and all, that he pretty much lived through a lot of that. But I, I mean, you know, for the public's benefit, there was a six- or seven-year period where we didn't have any contract with the firefighters. It resulted in two PERC charges, an FLSA charge and other charges. And it was, in fact, it was such a difficult and challenging time in this fire district's history that it overtook our election in 2011. Right? And so that was seven years ago. That's not to say that this contract is an easy way out. What I'm saying is that if you put it into the context of at least, I can't put it into the 100-year context, but I can certainly put it in the seven-year context. Rob and Peter has even more context. I just want you to know that this is not, we don't want to be in that situation again. And I think it's bad for the community. I think it's bad for morale among the staff and among our line personnel. And I don't want to be back there again. Thankfully, the contract with a lot of hard work was resolved when I just happened to be the president of this board. But it took a lot of work to get there. And without going into detail, the closed session discussions were kind of volatile too. I mean, it was coming together of not just our board, but of the firefighters, having the time the chief had his accident. So I want to put all of this in context. I think Peter gave some good context, but he has been around longer. Regarding the total comp issue, Chuck, I agree that it was always a total comp issue. But I guess, I never thought that this was ground zero, that you just can't eliminate the current terms. I mean, those are our existing obligations. That's not to say that, you know, maybe it was not, should have been clarified more. But let me ask you this. What would you want to do now? I'm not saying, and you're just like I am, one person on the board. Peter's ready to make a motion, but I want to hear what you think the solution is. Go back to the drawing table? What would you want? I'm just out of curiosity.
I don't want to discuss it further. I've made my points.
Then I'll make the motion, and there's going to be a discussion after that. I would move that we accept the report and authorize, we accept the report, approve the terms of the MOU, and authorize the fire chief to execute the MOU.
Okay, moved by Peter, seconded by Rob. And now we'll open it for discussion of the motion.
Okay.
Yeah. Again, I would like to just take this opportunity to thank the union representatives and the negotiating team for doing what I think they were asked to do. And I think it is important not to confuse the fact that someone may have misunderstood what was happening and characterized that as being misled. Those are two very different things. We can misunderstand something, but it's very different if we were misled. And each of us has our own perception as to where we were on this thing. I think this is the best agreement we could get. I think it's a fair agreement, and I certainly am comfortable voting for it.
Other comments? Rob, Robert?
I just want to thank the staff, and they're doing a great job. It was a lot of work, long hours, a lot of debates and stuff. Now, let's thank the union for hanging in there too. Could have helped add some certain things, but you saw some other benefits in, you know, this negotiation, what happens in the negotiation. And I want to thank the board too, for the interesting debate, because as a newcomer, it's really important to kind of understand history. Because history kind of determines where you are today and where you're going to go in future. And so I want to thank the board for sharing and being open and honest with that.
You know, this is, this is great. I mean, we've all worked as a team here, from your staff chief to the negotiating team, to our legal counsel, Ed, union representatives. And, you know, we've come to, as what Peter said, I mean, I feel a good contract. It's costly, like everything else. I mean, I just feel that in order for our citizens in the district, I feel they should have the best services and the best firefighters around. And we have that. So I'm more than happy to pay for that. And we're within our means here. We've got what I asked, the percentage as to our total budget presently at 63. If we do pass this measure, it'll be 67%. And we're way, way below some of these other agencies that are up in the 80s and 90s with their budget. So I feel really good about that. I feel really good about our CalPERS liability. I'm not happy with it, but I feel really good about that, not only, as what Virginia said, the past boards and our current board, we've been paying down our liability. And to date, if we had to pay this off, we have this in reserves. And that's not only bravo to our board, but bravo to the past and our revenue surplus. You know, within the last four years, we have $28.6 million in surplus. So we're sitting very well financially. We utilize the services of FEMA and the equipment for FEMA and the training for our firefighters, so we can get those good response times and those good trained firefighters. So I think this is a good contract. And I want to thank everyone for their contributions to make it possible for us to negotiate in good faith and try to get a good contract. Thank you.
Virginia?
I don't really have that much to say, except that no contract negotiation is ever perfect. Just by design, it's just impossible, because we have competing interests. And so I hear what the public is saying. There's no question about that. And I'm glad that the public has weighed in with their emails and their thoughts, especially you, Brian, for being here today. Thank you for being here. I hope that we were able to answer some of the questions. It's never an easy, never an easy decision, because no one is ever get the terms that they want. So I don't know. I still would love to hear what you have to say, Chuck, in terms of what would you want to do if you didn't ratify, well, vote on it or approve it.
You done?
Yeah.
I don't want to go into hypothetical here. There's no reason to. I just want to add two things that I haven't said before. One is, from my perspective, what I was interested in, I didn't get any of what I was interested in. I was interested in us moving to a lower pension tier. We could move down two tiers in pension in terms of safety, which would have relieved our future obligation and at least insulated us to some extent against what is a very troublesome bureaucracy in CalPERS. And we did not get that. And I was looking for flexibility in staffing so that we could, we could staff according to when most of our calls are, come in. Most of our calls do not come in overnight. They come in during the day. And at this point, while we have the opportunity to talk to the union about it, we didn't get any flexibility in terms of staffing. So if we want to hire more people, we have to hire them for 24 hours. We can't just hire them for 12 hours. So those two things were a disappointment. So I feel, you know, you say, oh, everything's a give and take. Well, from my perspective, everything was a take. I don't feel, I don't feel that there was anything gotten here. But anyway, I am going to vote against it. And I think we've had a full discussion of it, and if there-
But Chuck, I have a lot of respect for what you think. If you don't want to approve this, and I'm not saying that this has to be unanimous decision, what would you have us do? Take this back? That's all. I just want to know what you're, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I just am trying to work it out so that we can get a better understanding of what you want and not with those specific terms. Would you want to go back and say, okay, I need to do more research, and, you know, total cost of my definition was different from what I thought it was? I mean, what is it that you would want?
I want to have you stop asking the question, so I'm going to answer it very briefly. Obviously, if the board voted it down, and it doesn't appear that that's going to happen, but if the board voted it down, we would go back to negotiating and do something different. So that's all that could happen. I don't have anything to say.
So Eddie, what if the board voted it down? I don't want to be presumptuous. I'm just curious. What, I mean, Peter probably knows more. What, because you've been around a long-
Oh, yeah.
But what would happen if we voted it down?
Well, as, you know, the board president said, the parties would return to the table. And negotiations presumably would then continue. There is a significant risk of an unfair labor practice allegation if the district's subsequent proposals were less or going backwards from its prior proposals without new facts, new information, change in district finances, those kinds of things. That'd be a decision obviously they would make. And obviously, we would need to be talking to the board about what different overall deal points would be acceptable to a majority of the board.
A question for counsel as well as Michelle. I note, looking at the last page of the MOU, it calls for Eddie, Don, Brenna, Harold, and the board president to sign it. The motion I- The motion I made authorizes the chief to sign it, but doesn't speak to the board president. And I would just ask you, Chuck, would you like me to modify the motion to have this signed by the vice president so you don't have to put your name on it?
Let me be clear. I'm a believer in democracy. Whether this board will sign, I will implement, and I will sign as the board president or whatever.
Well, I'd like to then modify my motion to include the board president because I looked at the document. That's, in fact, the people who signed the MOU. Am I correct, Eddie?
Yeah, that's been a historical practice.
Okay. So who made the second?
Rob.
Okay.
I missed that motion. What is that?
We're amending the motion to include authorizing the chief and the board president to sign the MOU.
Oh, okay.
And that's acceptable to you, Rob? The shooter's restatement of it? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Imposed. So it's 4-1 with Bertinstina staying.
No.
James, excuse me. Voting no, sorry. Let's turn to the second item on the agenda then, please, which is the chief's draft response to the MOU, excuse me, to the grand jury report. And it's at the back of our packet.
I'll wait until everybody finds it. It's at the very back. It's only a few...
It's right at the back.
Yeah, exactly. Very back. So directors, this is more just of a check-in. I want to make sure before, after the last meeting, that I had the regular date presented as September, but I took advantage of this meeting simply because I thought it was a good point to give you a little update in here. I've tried to capture within the body of the narrative of the report. You can see now it shows how the board voted last time around, agree or disagree. There is one area, I think it was on recommendation six, where there was a difference in that. I also included within the findings some additional explanation on what the overall answer, or at least draft response, would be. Some of those are legal in nature. Tim Kremmons helped me. You may see some parentheses, too, with different people that are assigned, including myself, to try and write those answers, so we're working on that. By no means are those the final answers, but I want to just let you see what the progress has been. And then if you go to the recommendations, you can see which of the four categories in summary was selected, because that's not exactly the way they read, which is at the front of the document, but you're welcome to go back and look at that if that's something you feel like you need to do. And then within that, there are several here that I wanted to make sure that the board agreed to pushing into a committee. So you'll see those ones. They're highlighted or bolded in this particular case. There's four of them, but one of them is subsequently is including, which I think was a good recommendation from CSDA, because I talked to them about including this in our website. If you go to R10, the answer, the recommendation's already there, and they actually have helped me provide links that allows kind of the, I think, the recommendation or what they had asked for a recommendation to be realized. And we could do that right away. There's no sense in waiting to do that. That's one of the few where it says implemented and when, you know, would be immediately if you agree with that. So on the other ones that are in red, it specifies which committee it would go to, and we have committee agendas coming up, so I'm hoping between the finance and the strategic planning committee meetings, we can have some more dialogue about those specific items just so I can get some more guidance, maybe not from the full board, but certainly if you want to, we can make it the full board, but very least from the committee. So I don't propose to do it, you know, all by myself. What I'm trying to do is, again, just to check in, make sure that as I go through this and I look through your responses, and what we were trying to put in as the responses from you as the board members, or what we know is to, again, do a check-in and allow for some other things to occur, including for this to go to two different committees and for us to implement relatively quickly here, putting links and following through on recommendation R10.
Chief, can you give us the timetable once again? When do we want to send this off?
October 10.
So that would be...
No later than.
No later than, right.
That would be before our October meeting.
Yes.
So...
But it would be, you know, the September meeting's kind of the last formal meeting to bring you the full document, and the grand jury asks that you essentially, you know, validate and approve whatever the responses are. Doesn't mean you can't have a meeting after that if there's disagreement, but I'm trying to stay, you know, inside the timeline, so to speak, hence why I asked for this to be on this agenda, because, you know, as I'm working my way through it, I don't want to get behind. And I don't want to, I don't want to assume in some cases that the answers are all the ones that I think they are, so.
Let me ask Michelle in terms of the meeting dates. Michelle, the September meetings are the 4th through the 11th, but I don't have my calendar.
As soon as the 4th, I'll tell you the month second.
And it would be for finance and strategic planning.
Oh, yes, September 4th. I do have it here. It is the 4th.
Yeah.
Okay. So Monday's a holiday. What that means is today's Thursday, so these agendas are going to have to go out instantly.
Right. And we would add these items to those agendas. I mean, again, it's discussion at the committee level to work our way through like we did at the last board meeting, some of these areas where I think it's worthy of further discussion.
Okay. Any comments on any of this? Let me make sure I understand. What's the difference between the blue and the red on here?
Well, let me look.
Like the...
So the blue area in the very back, you're talking about R10?
Yes.
So those are links. So if you were, I guess, or at least the way that I cut and paste this was, those are links that are on the email I have of the exchange with CSDA that takes me to their site, which complies then with what the spirit, I believe, in a letter of what the grand jury's report was asking for. And my point is, you know, if we can implement this sooner rather than later, I don't see a reason why we wouldn't do it. I mean, you know, understanding what a district is, I mean, the grand jury, I think, raised that point. It's a fair point, one we get all the time. And, you know, there's a, the CSDA's done a good job of trying to outline what that is, and so why not just include it? Was kind of where I was going.
It seems that you have the discretion to deal with the website content all the way through, so why would this even be...
Well, I just want to make sure, this is, again, this is supposed to come from the board. It's going to be ratified by the board. I don't want to outpace board intent.
Does anybody have any comments on this? Well, obviously, it seems to me what you're recommending is fine, and putting this on the agenda is fine with me. So do you expect to present wording, or do you expect to have a discussion?
Discussion, and we can work on, you know, wording and what you would like me to say in there as well. I think that's a fair, that's a fair point, you know? Again, I don't presume that I have, you know, all the answers, and that I would put them in the way in which the board would always agree. So, you know, I think it gives me, again, a good check-in, as does I'm moving forward trying to include these responses, what they are. And you can see on the ones within the findings, primarily from legal counsel, they've answered the ones that had to do with donations and things like that. So that's, I'm not going to change that. I think that was a good, a good answer. It came from our legal counsel.
So the agenda item would be worded, I'm thinking about this for Michelle's...
So it would be exactly what you see in the red.
Discussion of response to R9.
Correct.
Okay. It's a very simple thing. Okay.
Yeah, there's a little bit of a discontinuity here, and it's more in the grand jury's findings and recommendations. They have a finding, F18, about the identity of the fire district, lead some residents to be erroneously assumed the agency's a function of. And then in the recommendation, where they're talking about, quote, "district identity," their recommendation talks about the website rather than the name. And we certainly, I think, are answering the recommendation appropriately. This is something we're going to address. I'm not sure why in their recommendation they didn't follow through on the finding that there was some ambiguity because of the name. And I'm not necessarily suggesting we get into it right away, but I think the finding is a very pertinent finding, and that at some point it might be quite useful to look at the name and see whether or not we are appropriate, what the name is appropriate, because there is a great deal of confusion on two respects, one of which between the fire district and the city of Memo Park. And second, fire protection. We know that the mission has evolved dramatically since 100 years ago when we were established. And at some future time, I would encourage us to come back and address that question because doing a good job of communicating to the citizens who we are and what we do is very important. And I didn't really focus on the fact that the finding didn't totally overlap the recommendation. The recommendation spoke to the website issue but not to the name.
And I concur with that. I think it is worth, even as I've seen some of these news reports about the task force three and so forth, they all say things like Memo Park has sent firefighters, too.
I know. I wish I could get him to say what I want him to say, but it doesn't work that way.
Do we need to...
Do anything?
Provide a guidance to staff?
That's all we need. Director of Staff, I know what we're going to do, what agendas we'll put it on. Like I said, I'll make sure we update the website by next week. And again, I think it shows good faith in terms of trying to proactively address the findings or recommendations, so.
And I would, you know, you've heard this before. When it comes to the website, on a scale of zero to 10 in terms of understandability, accessibility, et cetera, I think we're stuck at a five. And I look at other websites where you can find things more easily, et cetera. And I know that the people who maintain the site work very diligently to try to make it work as well as possible. I would just suggest that it might be a good time to simply say, "Hey, let's redesign the website." Because certainly from my standpoint, if I try to find something there, I have trouble. And if I have trouble, God help the citizen who isn't familiar with the district trying to find something on that website.
Point well taken.
Yeah, I brought that up this week, too, where I couldn't even find the MOU.
Yeah. And it's just, everything is there, but being there is not sufficient if people can't find it. And in my opinion, there's so much there, it's wonderful that there's so much there. But if people can't find it, it doesn't count.
There's one other thing related. I noticed that even in this letter that went out, too, I think it's hard for people to contact us. There perhaps should be a thing where it said, "Contact the board," and it goes to one place and then gets split up into five different people's addresses.
Or we have a board address. We have a board address. If you send something to the board address, it automatically comes to the five of us.
That's what I'm suggesting.
That exists. You know, when you send, for example, I want to send something to the board. I don't type in your names. I just put "Fire Board," and there is an address to which that goes, and then it automatically goes to each of us.
If you're talking about the email, there's a group name, but I don't think the public has access to that. In fact, I don't think anybody outside, and I'm quite sure nobody outside the district on email can access all the directors. And so in this letter that went out about...
Yeah, I think, actually, I think you're right, because on occasion, I will try to send somebody to the Fire Board from my non-Fire Board email.
You get a notice. You get a notice that says you're not permitted to do it.
Yep. So that's something worth looking at.
It's an intranet, I think, issue.
Yeah.
No, if you look at any of the council, it says mail to the whole board, and it's just one place and goes everywhere. It's just a group, basically.
Okay. Any other comments? May I have a motion to adjourn?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment. I'm sorry. I promised that this was an opportunity. This is public comment number two, and you can speak on anything, whether it's on the agenda or not on the agenda here. Any comments?
I moved to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Virginia seconded. We adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five zero, adjourn.
Sure.
Thank you.